Hello. Good afternoon, welcome to the combined Trinity Grace Methodist Church Bible Studies. I'm Pastor John, Pastor Kurt's on vacation this week. I like how he schedules it to start and then he goes on vacation. But he'll be back next week and so if you have any questions that are hard, you can write down your questions and save them for next week. If you'd like to do that. And otherwise, if you insist, you can ask me questions too, I suppose. But we, this is our study on Jesus in the Wild. It's a Lent Bible study and we are in Lent. This is the eighth, technically, the seventh day of Lent because we don't count the Sunday that we had. But so this is our second Wednesday, so we're doing our second small group session. And did everybody have an opportunity to participate in the devotionals this week? Because I don't know if you can read this at home. I can't. Sure, you can read that. It's about this bit. But that book is a devotional book and so each day, you do one of those assignments and you go through and look at it and if there's time toward the end, we'll look at the devotionals. Today's devotional was, that's tomorrow's devotional. It was Where. And so that started on page twenty-seven.
Oh, we didn't get that.
No, not a video, not a meeting. You do one of these devotionals every day. And so we did the first one on Ash Wednesday, the second one on the Thursday after, the next one on Friday.
Well, we're gonna start here?
I didn't get that today.
I hadn't even read these. I read one, two, three, four, five.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, yeah, didn't we?
Well, no. No, but like I said, if we have time at the end today, we'll discuss the devotional. But I was just saying that today's devotional, if you are doing one a day, would be number eight, which is, the name of it is Where. And it starts on page twenty-seven. So, do we understand how we're using this now?
Okay, yeah.
The, the, this is a devotional, one a day, so.
Well, I thought that there was forty, forty different paragraphs in there, but when we read.
There, there's actually forty-seven because there's one also for the Sundays, even though technically they aren't a day of Lent. At the Sunday, you're supposed to always celebrate Christ and all that stuff. Even during Lent, you're supposed to sell, have a day of celebration where we remember what Christ did for us.
Can you hear it all right?
Yes.
I can't seem to get the volume up, Benny.
We hear you, honey.
It should just be with the TV remote and it'll only go up as high as it'll go. Anyway, so, devotional, one a day, and so, let's see, there are twenty-nine left, so, you know, maybe you can try to get on track, maybe do a couple a day until you get caught on. That's okay. It's all right to be in, in the time of prayer and with God and in devotion. Oh, yeah, they're, they're not very long. Couple days, or a couple pages or so.
Yeah.
All right, so that's, that's how we're supposed to be progressing through. And then there's also videos and if you weren't here last week and you want to go back and see the video from last week, it's in last week's, posting on graceSunday.org, the same place where the church is, where you watch the church on Sunday morning, only you click on the Bible study tab instead of the Sunday service tab. Any questions about that? Okay, and, I think it sounded like most people at least did one of the devotionals. What did you think?
It's fine. I guess what, generally.
I, you know, I tend to be somewhat critical, and I don't mean critical like I'm looking for dirt critical. I mean, are you, are you standing close to the truth of the matter? Is this really the way it is? And I never heard of Don Wilk before. And I shared a bit of background that just neither pro or con to me. But, well, not in the middle, but I, I got one of the wow moments. And I think Garen speaking, I just mean, I think he's doing a pretty good job explaining Luke four, one through fourteen. Thank you. Doing very good.
Okay. Ron's gonna vote for him, so. All right, well, we'll continue along. We'll start by opening in prayer, so if you would join me in a moment of prayer. Gracious heavenly Father, we come before you once again with this opportunity to draw closer to you. Lord, in our world now, you give us so many tools with which we can try to establish, maintain, and grow our relationship with you. So, we're grateful for this opportunity to participate in this study. We're grateful and we pray that your Holy Spirit will be upon us as we continue this study and that your Holy Spirit will lead us and through the work of your Spirit within us, the work of the word of your Son that we read and your continued presence in all of your manifest ways that we would continue to draw closer to you, that we would learn more about you. And Lord, also, give us the courage to learn more about ourselves, to see what you would have us see and to try to get, come to a better understanding of whose we are and what it means to be yours. Lord, be with us now and always. We pray this in Jesus' name. Amen. Well, I think we'll just start the video and we'll see how it goes. I turned the volumes up on everything all the way, so there was some concern at home last week that they couldn't hear the video volume, so we can turn it down here, but I can't make it any higher for you folks at home. I don't want to share, but I'll just let you see it for a moment.
Grace and peace to you again in the name of God our Father, the Lord Jesus Christ, and the fellowship of the Holy Spirit. Our next session is going to look at Jesus in the Wild, Identity, Belovedness. And our theme question here is, what is my calling or vocation? And how do I actually begin to live into it? Our text is from Luke four, verse one, and it's gonna reflect back on some of the ideas that I shared in the first session. It says, "Jesus, full of the Holy Spirit, left the Jordan and was led by the Spirit into the Lord, where for forty days he was tempted."
And see him.
As I said in our first session, that forty days is very important. Jesus is about to obey in covenant faithfulness what Israel was not able to obey and stay in in covenant intimacy with God over forty years. He's going to show that he can walk this journey and he's going to, in his whole life ministry, really embody the life of his people, Israel. But we need to spend a little bit of time in this and its implications for you and I when it comes to our sense of vocation, our sense of calling. Jesus' experience in the wild of Luke four, again, is different from just suffering or even just temptation. I was taught to conflate those ideas with the idea of testing all through my journey, talking about the waters, maybe you were as well. The wild that Jesus enters is a spirit-led challenge. The Spirit leads him to the place where he's going to be challenged and there's going to be a proving that goes on that Jesus owns his Son of God status, his name as the Lord who saves. He has been guided, if you will, onto this field of contest, onto this field of battle. And so, we begin to look again at the baptism that led him there. While I don't want to be redundant, it is important to keep steadily coming back to this because what sits at the center for Jesus in terms of his vocation, being able to walk his journey through incredible challenges and pressures, the temptation to court the crowd and go with their acclaim of him and their, their celebration of who he was, and then to be able to handle the rejection of the crowd shouting rabbin and, and the crowd pushing him toward the cross. The reason he can face all of this is because his business card, his life business card, was already written in his baptism and is now being tested in the wild. "You are my son," is what the Father said in those baptismal waters. Jesus' core identity and vocation is clear. You have a vocation, a calling, Jesus, to live as a son in perfect communion with the Father. Jesus knows who he is. The enemy is going to seek, to unseat him from that confidence. Of course, whom I love. Jesus receives at the beginning of his ministry a word of affection and belovedness. This speaks of warmth. It speaks of, of emotional attention. That, that is going to feed him the rest of his life. Jesus will know whose he is. When we think for a moment that we can go through life without experiencing the love of God, experiencing the presence of God, we're simply, in my view, rationalizing ourselves out of our brokenness. Yes, we have brokenness in our lives where some of us struggle, even just in personality, to experience our belovedness and the affection of the Father of us. But I believe with all my heart that one of the things that the Holy Spirit is about in your life and mine is to convey just how precious you are to him. How can we move in the world in wholeness, in ownheartedness, in strength, in joy in the life if we don't know that even if everyone else loves? Or when we're at that point of death and we are alone walking through that day, that we are loved by our Father in heaven. It satisfies something in the soul that we then no longer look to other loves, lesser loves, dissatisfying. You know the old song, "Looking for Love in All the Wrong Places." We are wired to fill a love and affection gap within ourselves. The Father knows that and wants to convey to every one of us who follow Jesus, our great belovedness. He wants us to know who we are and he wants us to know how much we make of you, how precious we are. Whether or not we do anything, whether we can't earn this, we can't accomplish our way to it, we can't work our way to it, it simply is. Any parent understands this with their child. You don't have to do any religious gymnastics, any success gymnastics to achieve my love. You simply have it and you always will, no matter what happens. Then he says, "With you I am well pleased." Jesus receives an affirmation of his value before he's done anything. Therefore, Jesus not only knows who he is and whose he is, he knows why he is. He knows why God has put him on this planet. It's to convey that same love through acts of, of blessing and healing and creativity and teaching. He is going to bear his name into the world. His vocation is an expression of his who and his whose. It's an expression of his identity and his belovedness. It's the overflow. His life will be an expression of creativity that honors God and flows from that great fountain, that great source. As the psalmist said, "All my fountains are in you." Jesus' very name says what his vocation is and that's what's going to be the challenge. So, let me just talk for a moment about your identity as a child of God and what it is. So, the Father names you. You are a son, you are a daughter. That is all I'm convinced that the Lord will allow to be on our business card at the end of every day. We'll try to put all sorts of other things to get our identity out of, to get love from, and to extract joy and blessing from others in this life. And every single night, I believe it's like the Lord comes in and erases it all and just leaves son or daughter. Son or daughter. Your identity and mind is as a child of our Father in heaven, holy love. Your vocation, my vocation, is to be someone who then does something in the world. It is to be some, someone who then does something in the world. That's the essence of our true calling. It's the purposeful and powerful combination of a deep awareness of our identity, our belovedness, and our purpose. Pursuing purpose without knowledge of our identity and belovedness is a recipe for disaster. Calling is rooted in self-awareness before God. We have a young friend, a young saint in our lives. She's just a beautiful soul. And I remember her saying to us when, when she was younger, she's like a, a daughter in her hearts in so many ways. And she said, at one point, she said, you know, "Everyone is asking, who do I want to be? What do I want to do?" She said, "No, the right question is, who do you want to become? Who do you want to become?" Because every action in this life feeds into who we are becoming. And so, we have to get this understanding deep in us that like Jesus, he could face down those questions in the wild. He could answer them solidly for his own heart. He could walk the hard road because he had established who he was and who he was to become. And that's what gave him the force of life that we needed him to have to bring salvation into this, this world and into our hearts. The second question here is, what is your belovedness as a child of God? So, I want to ask you here, do you know that you're loved by God? What are you doing to nurture and to feed that experience of the Father's here for you? We can look empty in our lives and even be hungry and at the same time be as fool as we've ever been. I love that Jesus is fasting in the desert. Some of my favorite paintings come from this particular story. There's a particular one by a Russian painter that just shows the humanity of Jesus fasting alone in the desert, facing this inner battle that is happening with Saint Accuser, the adversary. And the fascinating part of this is that, you know, you know, he could look so bad, but inward be so good, right? He could look so weakened by the state of fasting and the challenge and yet be so full. What was he full on? He was full of the love of God from his baptism. He was full of the power that comes with knowing who you are and whose you are. And that enabled him to move in fullness into the world. In John four thirty-two, Jesus says, "His inquisitive disciples," when they bring him food and he's already good, right? "I'm good." And he says these words, "I have food to you, and you know nothing about." Those forty days of fasting, Jesus understood that there was a food that was beyond physical food that he would be sustained by. And that's one of the gifts that the practice of fasting can bring to us. When we say no to one thing, we can say yes to another. I love that passage, "My food," he says, "is to do the will of him who sent me," and to finish his word. Those words weren't just, just raw obedience from the distant Father. That was belovedness, huh? My will is to do the will of the one who loves me, the one who names me, the one who sends me, to do this great work. The Holy Spirit confirms the Father's love for them. And again, Psalm eighty-seven, verse seven, "All my fountains are in you." Jesus had that fountain, that fountain within you, that fountain of life, that fountain that fills the waiting spirit. And then I want to ask you, what is your purpose as a child of God? Every follower of Jesus has one mission. You ready? Here's your mission, should you choose to accept it. Owning your name as a child of God, your identity. Owning that you are loved by God. Ready? Here it is. Your mission and my mission as a follower of Jesus is to be like him in this world. It is to be like him in this world. It's not to simply follow moral patterns. It's not to simply go to church. It's not to simply do good things in this world, though all those things do matter and may somehow be a part of this whole tapestry of a life being lived, Jesus' word, right? Toward Jesus. But the idea here is that we are to be like him in this world. That is our purpose. Express in good friendship and good fathering and good mothering and good relating to people and good creativity and fruitful work and doing the things that are as much, you know, about duty as they are delight to us. Doing the romance of life and the joy of life and the responsibilities that come with it. We are to become like Jesus in the world. And he said, "In this world, you're going to have trouble." But I've overcome the world. We are becoming like Jesus. That is our purpose in life. Not only because Jesus is who he is, but because Jesus is the fully human being. We are becoming fully human in the way of Jesus. In first John four fifteen to nineteen, it says this. "If anyone acknowledges that Jesus is the Son of God, God is in him and they in God." And so, we know and we rely on the love God has for us. God is love. Whoever lives in God, excuse me, whoever lives in love lives in God and God in them. This is the language of vocation and mission. And this is how love is made complete among us so that we will have confidence on the day of judgment. In this world, we are like Jesus. In this world, we are like Jesus. We are becoming like Jesus. And that is how love is perfected in us. That's how we know our purpose in the world. One of my favorite authors, Frederick Dicker, passed away recently. He wrote about vocation and he says this. "It comes from the Latin book, caritas, and means the work a man is called to by God." There are all different kinds of voices calling you to all different kinds of work. And the problem is to find out which is the voice of God rather than unsupervised, they, or the superego, or self-interest. By and large, a good rule for finding out is this. The kind of work God usually calls you to is the kind of work, A, that you need most to do and B, that the world most needs to have. Famous quote from this, this passage, "The place God calls you to is the place where your deep gladness and the world..." The place God calls you to is the place where your deep gladness and the world's hunger meet. I believe this with all my heart. Jesus was so full of the Holy Spirit that he, if he didn't even do anything, we would determine as being mission. He was in the fullness of his calling. You and I could pass from this life at any time and if someone says to me, "Did you fulfill your life's calling?" My answer in this moment, if I passed away, would be absolutely. I own it again and again, daily sought to recall and remember through worship in my own spiritual practices in this life that I am a son, that I am beloved, and that I am becoming like Christ. If at any moment, anything gets added to that, wonderful. But at the end of the day, I'm fulfilling my calling by being who he said I am, whose he said I am, and then by living a life of love in the world, becoming like him. So, Jesus was full of the presence of God, was full of the breath of God going into the wild and we must be as well. If we're going to face down the accuser, if we're going to get those, that, those voices out of our head, if we're gonna stop him from stealing, killing, and destroying in our lives and the lives of others around us, if we're going to halt him from getting us isolated and alone and disbelieving the promises of God to us, leading us ultimately to our extinguishing, that is the enemy's goal. If we're going to do that, we must be settled in who we are, whose we are, our belovedness, and then that our calling is to live in the way of Jesus. If we don't settle that, as Jesus had settled going into his desert, there will be more loss than gain. But if that's settled, we're going to come out of the wilderness strong, full of the power of the Holy Spirit, come out of the wild, be unpredictable, be surprising, more like Jesus than when we went in. We must get this right, friends. Jesus did. The biggest questions of calling had already been answered for him. They had nothing to do with how impressive his resume was. So many things had not even happened yet in the gospel. It's the same with you and I. The question of the heart must be settled first so that we can then walk in a life of love that can handle both the joys and delights and the crosses that will come along the way. So, here's a question. Have you ever made yourself full of a love that was lesser than the love of God? What would it mean for you to welcome the Holy Spirit to speak into that love, to help it find its proper place in the context of his love for you and the entire world? Live into your vocation and will take a life. Let's pray. "Lord of the wild, there is an emptiness inside me that the loves of this world are eager to fill. They rush at me from every corner saying, 'They are the fountain I need.'" "I want to love nothing more than you, Jesus, and my loves to find their order in the context of your love for me and for you." And Jesus, amen.
All right. I, I, I nodded. Don't pick on me here. She picks on me.
Did, did you get one of the devotional guides?
No. Thank you, Pastor. This whole thing is mine?
We can talk about how to use it afterward. All right, so, when you go to church on Sunday, the text is one verse this week. And it's kind of surprising. Normally, it's a lot longer than that, but it's the first verse that we started last week where you read one through fourteen, I think. And so, this week, it's going to be one verse. And that verse goes like this, "Jesus, full of the Holy Spirit, left the Jordan and was led by the Spirit into the wilderness, where for forty days he was tempted by the devil." I don't know if you're using exactly this version, but that's what it's going to say. Anyway, just, just that one short thing and I always, I like, really like that second word, "Jesus, full of the Holy Spirit." And that's important because that means that Jesus had put on the full armor of God. And that's what this fellow here, Dan Wilde, is talking about, who wrote this study, is he's talking about us being filled full of the armor of God. He's talking about our identity, whose we are, our belovedness, and then our purpose. And that's what he talked about in this video was, as well, those three things. Anybody in here ever been to the funeral? Some of you probably have. And, you know, it's a bride and groom are coming down the aisle. They get up to the front and then he, the pastor says, "Dearly beloved, we are gathered here in the presence of God and of these witnesses." Who is that dearly beloved that he's talking to? I know I said funeral.
You said funeral.
I did, because some people, when they face their wedding, it's like a funeral, but.
No, I'm sure about weddings years, it's like a funeral.
Right, it, it is a wedding, but the pastor, it, it, especially in a more traditional wedding ceremony, will say dearly beloved. Who's he talking to?
Oh, Jesus.
No.
God.
I mean, he's always talking to God, but. He's talking to the people in the audience and he's talking to the bride and groom. He love it because you are the beloved of God. We are all the beloved of God. And when he's talking about belovedness, every time he says that. He's talking about that you, Dan, and you, Lois, and you, Ray, and it, uh, Jim, and Carolyn, and Carolyn, and Carolyn, and Carolyn, and. Ron and Joanne and June are all the beloved of God.
You did mention Lois. Yep, you did. No, he did it.
But we are all the beloved of God. And if you have doubt about that, you shouldn't because. Christ demonstrated how great God's love was for all humanity when he died on the cross by choice, willingly. And so I would, to me, that adds a lot of, uh, comfort to me in my life to understand that God loves us. And when he was, uh, in the video, he was talking about parents and their love. You know, you don't have to love your children, you don't love your children because of what they do. Or who they are, you just love them because they're your children. And that's a, that's a model of God's love for us. You know, it's not about what we do, it's not about what we do in the kingdom. God loves us. Just because.
Unconditional.
Yeah, unconditional, like, yep. Couple of weeks ago, we were talking about the three loves in Greek and one of those is agape, young. Which is unconditional love, unmerited love. You know, beyond, you know, we, we can't earn it. He just does. And, uh, when he, uh, started today, he was talking about Jesus doing something that. The Jewish people as a nation couldn't do, but Jesus was able to do. And that was to, uh, obey in covenant faithfulness, God. You know, they. And he, to me, that's. You know, why did Jesus have to come? Because he could do that. Why did Jesus have to come? Because he could pay for our sin.
He had to show that it, it could be done too with faith and, and with one.
Right, he could live in that covenant faithfulness.
Yeah.
He could do it. He didn't, he didn't falter. And even when he was tempted, because he had on that armor, he could stand through that armor of God, his, uh. I'm gonna, his, uh. His identity, who he was. And then his belovedness, that God loved him, and then his purpose. And his purpose was to do, do the will of God. From beginning to end. And I wrote at the top of the page when he was, my notes again, that I, he was talking about Jesus baptism again. Do we sometimes not put much importance in baptism in our day?
Excuse me, Ray?
I'm not saying specifically anyone in here, but as a culture.
Yeah.
Do, do we see any great value in being baptized? We don't, as a culture, we don't really see any much use in being in a relationship with God. And then sometimes I think even in the church, we don't always, well, yeah, I, I'm joining the church, I gotta get baptized, well.
Well, well, COVID, COVID stopped a lot of that too.
But that's gone now. But, I mean, right now, you know, sometimes, uh. Sometimes, like a lot of the things we do, sometimes it's something where we just kind of go through the motion. But when we think about it, Jesus baptism, it was important enough. Jesus baptism was important enough to God that God intervened directly in, in what was going on. And the first thing he did was he identified who Jesus was. He said, "This is my son." And then what did he do? What else did he say?
He's proud of me?
In whom I am well pleased.
In whom I am well pleased.
Big, big pastor.
So, a word of affirmation. So, God identified him and that's, that's part of what our baptism should be too. Not just something that we go through the motions, but recognizing that. You know, it, God's finger is upon us because he loves us just like he loved his son.
So when did the church, when is the church gonna bring another baptism back?
We have Sunday.
You had a baptism on Sunday?
Yep. Day of the Sabbath, right.
Excuse me?
The day of the Sabbath.
The Sabbath is Saturday.
Do you, maybe to us, it's always Sunday.
And we're done with that. And that's.
It's, it's terminology.
We, we, we don't need to worry about the day of it, but last Sunday, there was a baptism at Grace. Well.
He got wet.
Yeah. My view on baptism. Is that when people are married, have a child, they want to go to the church, have the baby baptized. Be saved. But in the years, years go by. When you get older, into adulthood. They think people should be baptized again, they have this in their hearts. Because the child has gone through. Whatever temptations and that sort of thing. But then people want to be baptized when they get older because they want to be more like Jesus. They want to be, they want to be saved.
Isn't a ba-, uh, it's not so much that a baby is baptized, they're christened in a way. I don't think it's baptism, isn't it christening of some sort?
Not in this denomination, whatever this denomination is, it's baptism. In most Protestant denominations, it's a baptism, infant baptism.
Now, now, to be baptized, don't you have to be immersed?
No.
Oh.
Jesus didn't say that.
Oh.
So baptism isn't something that we should just take lightly. And there are. Different denominations and different groups that do perform infant baptism and then some only do believer baptisms. And then sometimes we do services of remembrance of baptism. Which is, but is essentially what you're talking about. Uh, where the entire congregation remembers their baptism in some way. I think the last time that Ron did it, I don't know if Curtis done it since he was here, but. Ron had pretty little gold or, uh. Glass be, stones that were in the water and he reached in and got one of those and I have mine at home.
And the other one. Yes, of course, Branson.
Right. Cause I don't think Ron was a pastor at Grace. So baptism is important and we should at least get that out of it, that God placed an importance on it and Jesus placed an importance on it. And it was one way that God used to mark, "This is my son." And it can be the same thing in our life too. This is my son, this is my daughter. Because what identity is he talking about for us, this Dan Wilt guy? He's talking about our identity. What identity is he speaking of? As he said, what he say, you know, we want to write all sorts of things on our business card. But the, at the end of the day, the Holy Spirit white, sway everything and our only identity that's listed on our business card is. Son or daughter, and that's son or daughter of God.
Thank my grace.
That's the identity that's important. And so when you talk about identity, that's one of the first things I, I mean. We can put all sorts of things on our business cards and we put all sorts of things on our business cards that. And I know that we don't have business cards, but it's kind of a metaphor and analogy that. You know, we put all sorts of things on to our identity. And if it was represented by a business card, it might have been pastor. Might have been sheriff at one time. Or. Might have been printer, I know that's not quite right, but it's as close as I can come. Might be wife. Might be wife. Might be wife. And could be factory worker or anything, all these things that we label ourselves with. And every time we put another label on our, on our card, we have to be careful that we're not putting. Son or daughter of God further and further down on the list. Cause our identity is important. And our identity, I mean, it's so easy to get lost in our world, isn't it? So easy to get lost and lose focus and not know where we're going. Because we keep adding more and more things to us to identify us. And you know, husband and wife goes on there too and we think, oh, nothing's more important than that. But if you don't get that first relationship right, the husband and wife relationship can't be right. I'm an expert on that. I've been to school, okay? But. It, it's one of those things where sometimes you get to talk about it and you have no real understanding of what it is. But, uh, so identity is important. And it's the identity of whose we are. "You are my son," as Jesus said. Or as God said to Jesus. And. Then God gave Jesus a word of affection, lifting him up. And that's what God wants to do for all of us too, is give us that word of affection through the Holy Spirit. And that. I wrote this down today, I watched it yesterday too, it, he said that we are precious to God. You believe that? Go to, uh, the Sermon on the Mount, Jesus talked about the flowers in the field and the birds in the air and. That, God, those things are all precious to God, so how much more precious are we to God? Cause we can respond in love. We can respond to God in love. Feel a lot of it. And then if you were to turn in your devotion to page eleven.
It's in Roman numerals.
Uh, just the, just the introduction is.
Oh.
It gets regular pages after. At the bottom of page eleven, it says, "People in this world settle for all kinds of love. Romantic love, sexual love, friendship love, celebrity love, pet love. Love of country, love of spouse, even family love to satisfy their unspoken desire for divine love." We don't feel God's love, so we try to fill up that empty spot in our love with imitation.
Oh, true.
Or things that are lesser instead of finding the greater. To satisfy that, their unspoken desire for divine love. But yet everything we've been saying up to this point is God loves us. No matter what we do. So it's because we don't recognize God's love in our life that we have this emptiness. It doesn't mean that it, those loves, some of those I would have to say may be questionable, but loving your spouse, there's. Nothing wrong with loving your spouse, but you love your spouse better. When you recognize that our living into God's love and you recognize that God loves us too. Uh, some things may have their place, he says, but all our disordered desires until we understand their context. Within the great love of God. So, our identity is son or daughter of God. And then everything that comes after doesn't modify those things. Son or daughter of God and God's love modifies everything that comes after. Any comments?
No.
Let's see.
So, is Satan depend on Jesus not to know the word? Was with the temptations, it's crazy.
And, and we could ask that question just about always, can't we? About Satan, that, I mean, doesn't he know what God's word says? And yet he's still going along as if he has a chance. And of course, he, he will have his small victories along the way. People will succumb to temptation. People will choose to follow him instead of following God. And, but, you know, we, we talk about that on the cross, sin and death were defeated. I mean, I got a funeral on Friday, so it doesn't seem like death is defeated. Probably people are outside sinning all the time. I'm using a, an example to prove my point that it could be borderline sin even. But. You know, sin and death are defeated, but. Perhaps not in the way that we imagine they will be ultimately. But. You know, I, I, Satan is a, kind of hard to understand, is, I mean. Why he continues along his path when he knows that he's going to lose.
He sure reads those things, doesn't he?
Well, he shouldn't be on the path.
Right. Right, and you. I, I don't know if they imagine that it's still the USSR and there isn't any other source of information that his people have access to. I don't know.
I think when, just this week, um, Ukraine shot over into Russia. That can be a way to call it, they don't advertise that they're at war with Ukraine. They might get, get some pieces when they bring up their guys to serve in the army.
So our id, our identity is as a child of God by that.
Yeah.
And that's what we should put first in our life, a child of God. And then as we live into that identity, we can learn more, we can learn like Ray talked about a little bit, that, uh, we're saved by grace. That it's by God's grace, it's God's grace that he pours his love out onto us. E- even when we're not unlovable, God always finds a way to love us.
And then once we, when we receive God's grace and love, we give love forward.
Right, but once we get that relationship right.
Done that.
Then every other relationship will be better because every other like relationship will be, will be blessed.
Yeah.
By God's love that we live out into the lives of other people.
Good servant today. Good servant today.
So Jesus goes into the wilderness and he fasts and he was talking about a picture of, or a painting of Jesus fasting in the wilderness and, uh, that in that picture, Jesus appears with, uh, skin sunken in and because it was a physical, it was, he was physically not eating and as far as we know, not drinking for those forty days. So there's no reason to think that his body as a physical body would not undergo the changes that our body would undergo, sunken in skin and hollowed out cheeks and all that sort of thing. And that, uh, he was fasting and he said in there something about fasting. He talked about fasting as being, when you fast from something, you have an opportunity to replace it with something else. So one time I, Berlin, I stopped reading fiction and instead I read my Bible all the time when I would have been reading, I don't know, whatever I was reading then, whatever, whatever fiction I was reading, but you know, that, that for forty days, that, that was a great experience. And I read the same thing day after day. Same thing, John thirteen through seventeen and Matthew five, six and seven. So.
Change?
What?
You see new things each time you read it?
Oh, yeah. And it's more in here each time you read it. But tha- that's just an example of, of, of value that fasting, fasting can have. And it doesn't have to be that we don't eat like Jesus didn't eat or drink, although no doubt that sharpened Jesus focus on God.
It had to. I think you'd have to drink or you'd be dead. Why didn't? Well, humans, they have to have water to exist. You could do without the food, but you have to have. I would really throw a water.
I, I would say that he was drinking, but there is no, it doesn't say that he was drinking. It just says he was fasting.
Yeah. It was gonna center on that either. It was gonna center on the faith and the loyalty to God, not that he drank the dew off of them.
Right. And, and you know, this story appears in Matthew, Mark and Luke and all three of them about Jesus fast in the wilderness. And it's much shorter in the others. So, you know, it, it's not really about the fast, it's that he was fasting and and so specifically what was going on there. We know that he probably wasn't eating because that, that was one of the ways that the devil, Satan tempted him. Just to turn the stone into a loaf of bread. You don't know if it had a little twist tie on it or not. So, reason why I bring up fasting is he made another, uh, call to, uh, the woman at the well. Uh, Dan Wilt did when he was talking about it. He was talking that, uh, Jesus had went through Samaria and his disciples went off to get food. And Jesus sat and he had his conversation with the woman at the well. His disciples came back and his disciple said, hey, we brought you some food. And Jesus didn't say, boy, I'm hungry. Let me have it. He said something else, another evidence that he was still full of the Holy Spirit because he said from John four thirty-two, I have food to eat that you know nothing about. And then he went on to say, my food is to do the will of the one who loves me. Do the will of God. That was Jesus food. When Jesus was in the wilderness, he was doing the will of God. And when Satan was tempting him, he was doing the will of God. He was staying in the Father's love. So he had the bread of life, we might say, just like he talked about to the Samaritan woman.
And he was teaching, he was teaching and showing the future generations that this can be done. Am I right?
Yeah. That was one of the things. He fulfilled the law, so. So Jesus was, purpose was to be the son of God and to live within the will of God. And that's also our purpose, to be the son of God. Whereas Dan said in the mission or in the, uh, video, Dan Wilt said, to be like Jesus in this world is our purpose, to be like Jesus in this world. And I wrote in a little bit more on the other page about that. In this world, we are to be like him. That's our purpose, be like Jesus. What do you think, Carolyn? How you doing on that?
You're shortened obituary.
Yeah, yeah, it certainly would, but you know, instead of our obituary saying to be like Jesus, that was my goal, we talk about all those other things that, all those other loves that we had. But there aren't very many obituaries that start out by saying, uh, so and so had no relationship with God and they are consigned to the fiery pits of hell. Don't see that too often. You know, uh.
Why, why do you have a funeral? What is the purpose of a funeral?
What?
Custom.
Well, part of it's custom, tradition, celebration of life, the life that the people had. An opportunity for the family to gather and share stories and remembrances.
Okay.
And it's comforting. It's comforting to the families. It's also comforting that, uh, if someone gets up and talks about what a wonderful Christian person they were, were, and they give all sorts of examples of how this person lived their life, just like we're seeing. It's a good example for us. Nope. You know, you don't get up and say, well, she was perfect in every way, but you can get up and you can acknowledge those things where where she hit the mark or he hit the mark.
Jewish festivals, they bury the same day they die. And why they bury them the same day they die on Jews?
Before sunset.
Before sunset. Yeah. There's one custom, you wait seventy-two hours. It's like one, you, you can't wait more than seventy-two hours. Is that why they broke Jesus, they're gonna break Jesus' life to hurry the.
Well, so that they could get him down.
So they can take him down and bury him.
Well, just to be practical, he didn't have to bother Jews back in those days and it was free at half.
You're right, Rod.
Yeah, but they're still doing it. Yeah.
Okay. So in this world, we are to be like him. And then he gave us a series of things. He said, I am a son or a daughter of God. I am the beloved of God. I am becoming more and more like Jesus. I am living a life of love. As I become more and more like Jesus, as I live more.
For your calendar, mom physical therapy starts on Friday, March third at three P M.
Don't worry, it'll repeat one more time if you missed it that time.
From your calendar, mom physical therapy starts on Friday, March third at three P M.
Thanks, Rob.
In my parents', in the sunroom at our house.
Five oh X.
And we already talked a little bit about questions of the heart have to be settled first. And the first question is, do we acknowledge that we are a beloved of God? And if we acknowledge that we are a beloved of God, if we believe that, then we have to get our love life in order. Get the priority right and then everything else will fall into place. Jesus, God, those two, o- other son and Holy Spirit first, and then everything else will fall into place.
Where were you months ago?
Yeah. It was probably, well, it's a Wednesday. I was probably right here. But.
When you were saying that, I was thinking about, what is your relationship with God? You know, like they were dying and you were preparing them in eternity. I thought that's where you were going with this. Is that where you were going? Some people get offended though, if you go that far. All right, you have to question me on that. I'm okay. Yep.
Yeah, it's a judging the state of somebody's salvation. Recently, somebody told me I was going to hell.
Did you?
Yep. I said, I didn't say anything, just, and I was glad that I wasn't up to him.
I, Jesus, you would say, I didn't say. Sometimes I.
Cause he was walking away then and I was, I was well pleased with the conversation going away, so. You're right. Some people get offended and I think we have to really be careful in that implication because we don't truly know, you know, that someone else is going, we, we don't know that. But, you know, it, that doesn't mean that we can't speak into someone else's life. We see them doing something that indicates that they may not be living the best life they could. Some people say that that's judging too, and that you can't speak and point out some, what someone else is doing wrong.
I don't think you can get through everyday life without offending someone. I mean, I get to the point I offend myself.
Believe I should.
Uh?
Yeah, it's like, I can't, I shouldn't.
Yep. Rob, don't pick on me here.
Pick it on me, yeah. The, we've all done that, said something that we were sorry about saying and.
Oh, yeah, I remember the other day, I brought that up to you.
All right. So I have a few questions here from our, our guide, guide. And so I don't, how much time? Oh, we got a little bit of time. So what kind of things have you put on your spiritual business card over the years? And how did God erase some of the extra items you had beneath your name? You ever had that happen to you? You think you're doing something that God wants you to be doing? And then every single thing, you know, draws you away from that, like, like it wasn't of God at all?
No.
I have.
I do. What was it?
I don't even remember. But you know, sometimes churches get into a habit of doing something. And why do Jews bury people before sunset? Now, it's because of tradition. But, you know, sometimes we get into those habits and we keep doing it and it no longer is pleasing to God and it no longer, I mean, just read the Old Testament about how many times the Jews are going through the motions of the sacraments and the sacrificial system. And the, especially in the minor apostles, it says over and over again about how God says he wants to spit out their sacrifice out of their mouth because he knows that they're not doing it from their heart. They're just doing it because they're going through the motion. And so, you know, sometimes, sometimes we do that. We hold on to things that have no, no more value in our life or no more value to God, and we just keep doing it because it's what we've always done.
Habit?
Habit, yeah. Fake tradition is a happy, uh, fancy word for habit.
Some people have a habit during that.
Some people have a, yeah, absolutely. I think probably we always all, we all always have something new that we could get about that we don't have to go back and do the same things, but.
But you know, I think there's some value in tradition, the whole idea of forty days. That's a tradition for hundreds, couple thousand, almost. Anyway, we do it, we just do it. And I thought, you know, in a way, this, I'm fasting. Right now, this Bible study, if I, if I wasn't doing this, I'd be doing something else. So which really would be most pleasing to God? What I would be doing otherwise? Or spending more time here on Wednesday? There's so much good coming from this, it's gonna be hard to walk out. I mean, I've admired him for the number of times. He asked me a really funny questions. It hit me when I was about twenty-five, I worked in three M, I'm making copy paper. I've had, what, I've had three kids, I'm happily married, I'm making good money. I'm, uh, everything just keeps great. But.
So what's missing?
Is this really what I want to tell God I did with my life? I made sixteen million dollars a cop, million copy paper? No, and then, you know, kinda like God said to me one Friday evening, you better go down and have a talk with your pastor. And Junior, when I was going out to go. Cause he had a purpose for my life, he's a new person. You know, I needed to fulfill.
Me?
Well, that's, that's part of it.
Yes, I know your fourth thing.
When, when I was ordained, I, you know, you don't remember some of these too much, but Bishop Raines said, where the gifts you have cross the need of the world, that's where you're supposed to be. And I just found out where he got that from.
I just read it?
Yeah. So he didn't think about it. And he said that when I was being ordained, I says, that confirms it. That's it. I believe I'm doing the right thing by taking my family, selling the house we built, jerking my family out of the town and going to school all over again. When he said that, I said, you know, that's where I am. God helped me to use what my life, where I am, where it crosses somebody's need, I wanna be there. So this is the vocation, the calling. And it's not only that, but what it does do.
Not as long as we're breathing.
Yeah.
One other thing that he talked about toward the end in today's video was from one John four verses fifteen through nineteen. And I don't know which one of the verses it was, but it, it was whoever lives in love, lives in God and God lives in them. That, that just struck me that whoever lives in love, lives in God. God lives in them. And I was thinking about, you know, where our gifts cross God's purposes, right where we're supposed to be. Cross God's purposes, right where we're supposed to be.
Now, that was, God went farther than I expected.
That's the mystery of that.
I made a list of what I wanted in the husband, he fit the bill. And he went. Further than I expected. The last ministry was not in life.
Alright, so we talked about at the beginning that. This is a daily devotional and we started it a week ago last Wednesday. So on the twenty-second of February, we did lesson number one, or devotion number one. And.
That was Luke.
Well, that was this devotion over Luke. The, the, the whole series is based on Luke one through fourteen, yeah. And. So does anyone have any specific comments from that first devotional? It was a little bit longer than some of them that follow on. But they all start. With a, a little bit of scripture. And then they end with a little bit of prayer. And I think in a. The first one, if you go to page three in that first devotional. In the second paragraph, but along the way of growing up in Christ, and by that I mean the long growing up. That takes decades and sculpts the spirit. Or sculpts the spirit, we make the discovery. And that in the next paragraph, he says, life is by nature unpredictable. It is what we will call wild. And so, we may not be out in the desert. But we're in the wild because our culture, I know that every culture, every time thinks that things are. Worse than they've ever been before. But we are living in the wild because we live in an unpredictable time like human beings always have. And then in the next paragraph, it says, Thomas Merton, when speaking of the early desert fathers. Those who chose a wild and unpredictable life. When the empire became Christianized, wrote, what the father sought most of all was their true self in Christ. And in order to do this, they had to reject completely the false formal spell. Fabricated under social compulsion in the world. They had to give up everything. And, you know, those people, the monastic monks who went out into the desert and lived by themselves, gave up everything. Lived as, you know, we, we joke about John the Baptist eating locusts and honey and wearing camel hair coats. But, you know, that's what they did. And so, they were trying to get control of their life. Get rid of some of that unpredictiveness. And you could see a little bit of Ron's story in there too, that sometimes you have to give up everything that you are comfortable with. And everything that you are, because that's what God is calling you to do.
Yeah, but look at the rewards you have now. You have, you have abundant rewards.
I, I can't imagine someone who was more cut out to be a pastor's wife. Of course, I'm looking at it from. After dot, at the beginning, but. Alright, so anybody have any other comments from, uh, the first week or the first day? If not, we'll go to number two. And that starts on page six. And this, in this devotion, he's really talking about a. Jesus baptism and what God says to Jesus during his baptism. But on page seven, the first paragraph down. And Will said, into this world, yours and mine, a Savior comes, a representative human. He models in heart, in mind, in body, in purpose, what it means to live the truly good life. In his shining model, we see virtues that stand in stark contrast to the vices given sacred saint status by the world. In his shining model, we see virtues that stand in stark contrast to the vices. Given sacred status in the world. You know, you don't, you don't have to look too far to see things that the world elevates as being meaningful and very valuable. At the. At the expense of the kind of life that Jesus modeled. Anybody have anything else they'd like to say from, or talk about from lesson number two? I know you wrote stuff, Ron, I'm trying to find what you, what you were, what you wrote.
Oh, I answered one of the questions, okay. It is personal to me, and my answer was no. Well, the question, is there a wilderness you sense? Is there a wilderness you sense the Holy Spirit has led you into recently?
Yes.
You know, right now, I'm not in a wilderness. But there's a pretty good chance I'm one of these in the very near future. But right now, I have to say, you know, and it, it caused me falling into question your faith and confidence. And who God has called you to be? No, no, no. I'm not, I'm, I'm not. I, I, I had, I had, I have a certainty about God, you know, I am. A son of God, and I am beloved, and I'm doing what best I can, what God wants me to do. So I'm gonna have to say no to that.
Well, that's a good answer.
But I know very well, it just changed.
Because. Our world is unpredictable and. When we try to take things for granted today, sometimes they're gone tomorrow.
In a length of an eye.
Was there a question for number three? Oh, I'm missing page twelve from mine. I go from eleven to thirteen.
I look for loving, full. Of the Holy Spirit. Have you ever made yourself full of the love that was lesser than the love of God? You bet your. I was a pastor and I had thirteen steam and diesel locomotives and eight, eighty-some. Train cars.
Model Railroad?
I had a love for Model Railroad that was feeding into my ministry. So, yeah. Watch out. Those hobbies can just, just move in and take over.
He had an ice collection. He had his first one in the first house we lived in, here in Martin City. And he had them above window, made a track around. I think that was beautiful.
And the thing was, let it go, and what this lesson was so important to me because someone said. You can let it go or become indifferent to it. Who said that?
What does that mean, indifferent to it?
Ignatius, Ignatius.
Indifferent to it means if you don't let it go sooner or later, it just won't mean anything to you anyway.
Oh, that is so true. I've gotten so much junk in my home.
Over and over again, we do that and we think. We're gonna find something in this new thing and it, it just turns out to be like the old thing.
Ignatius, look at the world with. Holy, holy, learned indifference. And I read, and I studied, and I'm an expert in all sorts of not so worshipy things. But I've come to look at it with a belief in difference. What difference is that? Doesn't it make you better Christians just because you haven't learned, you learned all this stuff? Not necessarily, but especially if it just filled your life.
Well, there are professors teaching in seminaries that don't have a saving faith. And they know all, they know all that stuff.
And then you said what?
I said that there are professors in seminaries teaching people how to be pastors that. Don't have a saving faith themselves.
You'll be talking about the way I used to be, and the way I am now in Christ. That happens over and over.
Okay. Question for number four. On page twelve, have you ever made yourself full of love that was lesser than the love of God? Is that the one you just handed me? My pages are out of order. It's my fault. Then on page sixteen. Have you ever put something on your spiritual business card, like a ministry or area of service? That you found your identity in? Was it ever taken away? And if so, how did you respond? And the next question would be on page nineteen. Has the deep gift of friendship or companionship ever been a source through which you chose? A path that you now realize was not the best choice for your relationship with God?
Yes.
Yeah. Have you ever, because of a friend? Or a companion made a choice that drew you further away from God? That drew you away from God? That wasn't a bet for the relationship that you have with God?
Um, in my case. No. There's an old Christian chorus in the Senate Church camp. Go, none go with me, yet I will follow you. I, I've never had any friend or companionship. That kept me from following God.
I've had friends, I've had to give up.
I've actively led someone further away from God.
Not intentionally?
Oh, yeah.
You did it on intention?
Yeah.
Is that before you were a Christian?
I'm a sinner saved by grace. I needed grace.
Oh. That's before you were a believer?
Yeah.
It's stuffy in here. How did you reset your relationship with God while still receiving the blessing? And encouragement of your companions, companions on the journey? Can you do that? Sounds like two different things.
I, I would think it's kind of mutually exclusive. You gotta get that first relationship right. And then you can go work on your relationship with.
Okay.
So we just have that one go.
Or, or at least for a time.
There'd be good thing I loved.
Oh, look at this dog. Wow. Oh, he's gorgeous. Like a cow? No, he's not calling a hen.
No, Australian cattle dog.
Would that be considered Shep, Shep, was she dogged?
Nope, Australian cattle dog, heart dingo.
What a beautiful baby.
Dingo.
What's its name?
Posey.
Oh, wow.
Talk about stealing the show. I know, no. Control is an illusion.
What, what we. Cats and dogs. I mean, God, God gives us so many things to be happy with, I mean.
Well, let's go on to, uh, number, page twenty-three. Have you faced a trial recently, or, or are you in one that is revealing your strong and weak points of faith? Can you imagine that the Holy Spirit is involved in the process? Showing you your own heart so you can be strengthened for greater challenges ahead?
No.
Yes, for me.
I disagree with you. I can imagine the Spirit might do that.
Yeah, well, I, I was yesing the first part, and so I think if you yes the first part, I hope you. You can yes the second part.
I said no.
Oh, you said no, okay.
Don't pick on me, Will. I thought maybe you'd have something to say to that. No. She's entitled to pick on me here?
And then the last one is on page twenty-six, our last question for this week is. You have a daily or weekly quiet place where you can get before God and hear his voice?
Oh, yeah.
Have you set up a personal retreat by yourself or with a group?
Yes.
Oh, this year. So I'll read it all. Have you set up a personal retreat by yourself or with a group? We can hear God at, at times with others this year.
Yeah.
So do you have something planned for this year or? Kind of a spiritual retreat sort of thing? And then, if not, what would be a good thing to do for your spiritual health? Or would that be a good thing to do for your spiritual health? Probably. Well, does anybody have any comments about this week's lesson?
I think it was great. It was more informative, it, 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 it was more enlightening, more down home. Uh, that don't sound right, does it? It's reality in two days, what she's saying. And you get the dog back in the.
I think the dog went outside.
Oh, there's two in our.
The dog.
Well, let's close in prayer and then we can.
Why, he's coming.
Oh, yeah.
Hi, ma'am.
That's my mom.
Is that your mom? Hi, mom. Does she hear us? Yeah, she's waiting. Oh, wow. Hey, mom, you did well in parenting. There's the dog. Oh, thank you, God. Oh, wow. Oh, look at the smiles on everybody's face. That is great, isn't he?
All with him.
Oh, wow. Thank you, mom. Oh, that dog. I love, oh, wow.
Let's go ahead.
Now, I, I'll hold my bill. I, I, I'll never get another one, okay?
Never, never.
Take that dog. That dog's overweight.
No, she's not.
Oh, she isn't? Oh, okay.
Not by two pounds. Not by two pounds. Forty-eight instead of fifteen.
What a, what, what a way to end a Bible study. Everybody has a smile on their face.
Well, then let's end and we can now be about our business. Let's close in prayer. Father, it's so easy for us to think our calling is about, is about what we do. And what you want us to do, rather than about who we are and our belovedness to you. Forgive us for. Forgive us for the years spent thinking our spiritual business card should be filled with our achievements, roles, or gifts. We thank you that you have named us, loved us, and called us to live from the center of being, your beloved child. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.